Okay, I think this is it.
We are recording.
Thank you. So, welcome everybody to this Thursday night workshop. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
The republic which is.
One nation.
And nation under God.
Indivisible, indivisible liberty and justice for all. Dana, could you do roll call, please?
Yes, Sayuslaw Valley Directors, Ron Green.
Here.
Ned Hickson.
Here.
Alan Burns. Jim Polisi. Sam Spade. Western Lane Ambulance, Cindy Russell. John Murphy. Rick Yesny.
Here.
Larry Farnsworth.
Eric.
Mike Webb.
You did.
Western Lane Fire and EMS Authority, John Murphy, Sam Spade, Cindy Russell, Jim Polisi. So, we have a quorum with Western Lane and we do not have a quorum with Sayuslaw Valley or Western Lane Fire and EMS Authority.
Okay, that is fine. Thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight. This is our last workshop this month. And we reached out to PERS to see if we could have a presentation about PERS and then be available to answer your questions. Just a reminder, this is not about benefits. This is, we're more interested in the actuarial studies with PERS and what's coming up. And in the future, and we have somebody else coming in here. Could be one more director. There's Sam.
Director Spade.
So SCFR now has a quorum. Okay, so Mary Michelle, I'll let you introduce yourself and what you do for PERS and then we have your presentation. We can share your screen or I can show it on my screen. However, it works out better for you.
So, thank you for having me. I miss going out to see employers, so I'm glad that we get to work this out over Zoom. My name is Mary Michelle Sazney. I'm the Actuarial Business Specialist at PERS and I'm the primary contact for all PERS employers. Anytime an employer has questions about how their rates are calculated, questions about the UAL or their individual UALs, questions about why am I a part of this pool or how legislation might affect your rates, or if you had heard anything about the Employer Incentive Fund or the UAL Resolution Program, I'm the primary contact for those programs as well. So primarily, my job is to translate the actuarial speak into something that makes more sense. So that boards understand it or budget and finance directors can make presentations to their boards whenever they have to make any kind of financial changes or directions based off of new first contribution rate. So if you could project, that would be great. And I have provided some kind of background history on how we've come to the, how the UAL has started and some kind of key points to understand. Anytime you have a question, just kind of pop in to interrupt me. And at the end here, we'll get into more specific information about both of your entities and your specific rate. If you want to go to the first page.
Okay, everybody seeing that?
Yep.
Okay, good. Okay.
So if you want to go to the second page.
How's this?
The PERS funding. There you go. Yep. So essentially, everything balances on this equation. Contributions and earnings equal benefits. And anytime contributions or earnings are out of what we assume or the actuaries assume they're going to be, then our benefits are out of line and that's when we end up with a UAL. So every two years, we start to make adjustments based off of what we see and what we project is going to happen over the next 20 years or so. If you want to go to the next one. There are a couple factors that the PERS Board takes into account when they're setting the rates. A while ago, there was a trend for PERS Boards, or not PERS Boards, but Boards in general to set the rates based off of a funded status. The goal would be to maintain, say, 80% funded status for the retirement system. But when you set rates to a funded status, what happens to the employers who contribute is that your rates can vary wildly depending on whatever happens in that interim period. So if you say have a pandemic in the middle of it and all of a sudden your earnings drop, then the contributions will have to be boosted significantly in order to maintain that funded status. So we no longer try and meet a funded status requirement because it's not, it moves away from that second goal of that predictable and stable employer contribution rate. And of all the things that we have listed there, really predictable and stable is what we're trying to maintain, I would say, as the top goal. Transparent, it kind of goes without saying, we're trying to have a transparent process. We're moving more towards that with trying to translate the actuarial process so that more employers understand what goes into that and being clear about how legislative changes impact employer rates. But ultimately, the PERS Board goal and I think the intent behind legislative changes as well is to ensure that employer contribution rates stay relatively stable over time. Go to the third slide there. So there are a couple of basic factors that have to be taken into account whenever anyone is considering PERS reform. And then just to take a moment right now to delineate, PERS, the agency, has to implement any kind of, any kind of reform, but we don't get to say in it. It's just our job to kind of do. We take the orders and we do it. But the legislature is the one who creates the rules for PERS. So I know that sometimes there's PERS, the program, and then there's PERS, the agency, where the agency, the legislature owns the program. So after, the biggest issue that we face for legislation now came from a lawsuit called MORO. And from MORO, basically, it was determined that we can't make any changes to member benefits retroactively. So any changes to benefits have to go from the date of that legislation going forward. And that's been determined to be okay by the Oregon Supreme Court. So that's the biggest factor whenever we're looking at PERS reform. And remember, everything has to come back to that basic formula of benefits equals contributions and earnings. So really, the only things you can change there are contributions, earnings, or benefits, one of those three things. Any reduction in benefits, like it says there, will be challenged in court and this can only be changed from a certain date going forward. Everything is kind of just a math driven by math. This is from the, our director's slide and he wanted to make sure that this was included in here, his final thought. The PERS situation is driven by math. As an agency director, there's little margin in having an opinion about math. So there's not a whole lot of wiggle room in there. If we go to the next slide, this talks about kind of where the UAL came from. In the eighties and nineties, retirees were getting a substantial match about, earnings were about 15%. And we realized that, or legislatures later realized that this was kind of getting away from us and it had to be corrected. That can only be corrected through legislation. So ultimately, that started to be corrected through legislation, but it's corrected too late for that to be avoided from UAL. And then we also had the dot com crash and the resultant economy crash. There you go. I forgot all of English in that moment. And we started to have to kind of make up that difference. And that was, that's kind of the struggle that we saw there. We have addressed those past issues, but there's still a time that we have to kind of catch up for those prior issues that we've had. And really, the only solution that works in this scenario is time to make up for it. People have to retire. They have to stop pulling, withdrawing on the system, which just means pass away unfortunately. And then we had to bring more people into the system to continue to fund it. Then if we can just skip the next slide real quick and go to seven. Just so you can see this. The UAL right now is 66% of it comes from people who are retired. But 71% of our active members right now are OPSEC. So 66% of them are tier one retirees, tier one or tier two retirees, but 71% of them are OPSEC. So when we're looking at PERS reform to take change, to make changes for the plan going forward, a lot of it we see coming down on OPSEC, which changes the plan going forward, but we can see that OPSEC for UAL purposes is only really 7%. So great that that helps out for 7%, but it doesn't really make a difference going forward. Or go retroactively or really with that bigger issue of that $25 billion question that we're facing. All that being said, if you go to slide eight, we still have done fairly well with funded status and we got pretty close. So we can see right before the dot com crash, we were getting closer to getting pretty good funded status here. This is without side accounts. So with side accounts, which we'll talk about later, we were closer to about 80% in 2007 and then, of course, the crash. But we rebounded pretty fairly quickly. And then 2017, we're almost at 80% again. So COVID, I think, will set us back, but that's just the earnings part of the equation that's bringing us down, not necessarily a failure in contributions or from a planning perspective. And then if we look at the next slide, we can look at our projected UAL. This is also excluding side accounts. And we can kind of see the trajectory of that as well, continuing to go down. And this does include the recent changes in Senate Bill 1049 with the reamortization of UAL. There's a lot of information, a lot of PERS jargon. Do you have any questions?
Well, Michelle, I mean, Mary Michelle, is Mary Michelle or just Mary?
It's Mary Michelle, but I'll respond to almost anything.
Mary Michelle. Okay, so can you explain the 7.2% steady return here? Is that an assumption or is that a guarantee?
It's an assumption, except for a tier one employee or members, that has to be a guarantee for them. But for the UAL, it's an assumption.
Okay. And for our directors, can you explain the difference? Some of us are not familiar with the difference between tier one, tier two, and OPSEC.
Yeah. So that's just based on when you were hired. So all new employees from, I want to say, I believe it's 2000. Oh, I'm going to get this wrong. I want to say 2006 going forward is OPSEC. 2003 going forward is tier two. Anything before that is tier one. Yeah. Tier one basically has the Cadillac best possible option retirement plan. Tier two is a little bit better and OPSEC is, came out at the same time as IAP with the supplement plan. And that's what all new hires are getting.
Okay. And then within that, there's different groups for justices and different types of employees. Is that right?
We have the justices or the judiciary are, yes, they're their own separate special group. And then we have police and fire and then general service.
Okay, so.
For both tier one, tier two, and OPSEC.
So police and fire would include firefighters, but not paramedics?
Correct. I think that there are some special circumstances that have been carved out by the legislature, but generally not paramedics, actually.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mary Michelle, I was looking at this screen that's up right now. Is it's, it looks like it's in dollars and billions instead of percent. Is that right?
That's correct.
So. It'd be really great to see what the percentages are projected to be like you were talking about. I'd be really interested in that because it looks like it's basically, the plan is if returns can say it's 7.2%, this is basically showing that over time, I guess, what is our, what happens to our contribution rate in this? It assumes a 7.2% return, but what happens with the contribution rate side?
The contribution rate is expected to go down. The biggest driver for your rate and any employer's rates right now is your UAL rate. That's the highest portion of it. And then the kind of variable rate is your normal cost. Normal cost rate reflects the amount it takes to cover benefits for the employees you currently employ. So there's an Excel sheet that I also provided and you can kind of see these rates broken out. But you'll notice that the UAL rate steadily increases. And as of 2018, that is the true UAL rate. Before, it was what we call collared, but to prevent a drastic increase, they kind of put a cap on it so it can't ever go increase more than 3% essentially. So right now, we're getting to the true UAL rate. You're actually paying what you would owe to completely pay the UAL for that BIA. And so when we keep at that rate, everyone's projected to have their contributions go down BIA over BIA. With COVID and not knowing how our earnings will be affected, I'm not sure where we'll end up depending on how drastic that affects our, that affects the earnings overall. That could, if we threw, if we pretended that COVID wasn't happening, I could say without a doubt, our contribution rates would just continue to go down. And that's the path that we would be set on. The earnings issue is a, is a variable that we have to consider right now. I can certainly get you the funded status percentages, though, so you can take a look at it and have a clear idea. We also do have a financial modeling projection of what the system average contribution rates are projected to be over the next 20 years as well.
Okay, thank you. That'd be interesting. Thanks.
So, Mary Michelle, so you just described two different costs that we have. We have the cost for our existing employees. And that's basically, I think, the chart you're looking at here on the screen. But we also have the, the cost for the past retirees, right?
Yes.
So what PERS does is you set rates for trying to gain that 80% funded status, not just for our existing employees, but we also have the catch-up cost of the UAL for people who have retired.
Yes and no. So we don't, we don't base rates off the 80% funded status. I just meant to say that there was a point in time where retirement systems tried to set rates to get to a funded status and we don't do that anymore. But yes, in the fact that we have a rate to pay for past people who have already retired and then you have a rate to account for people who you currently employ.
Right. Okay, so we have some other slides. I guess you're going to talk about these things.
Yeah.
Ask more questions then, so. There's two dynamics here, is what you were saying, is we have our current employees setting aside enough and being, being charged by PERS for their anticipated actuarial liability. And then we have unfunded liability.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, me bet. So if we want to go, we'll start talking about you guys now, the part you actually care about. We can go ahead to the slide that starts with pooling. So this is an important concept to understand. You guys are part of the state and local government rate pool. And employers join the rate pool or were required to join the rate pool at some point. Now it's an option, but in the beginning, there were certain groups that were required to join. And basically, the pool stabilizes your UAL rate. But as a member of this pool, your tier one and tier two assets and liabilities are combined with every other employer in the pool. And then that, those assets and liability or the UAL amount is reallocated back to you based on your payroll. So your UAL amount that shows on your valuation is not your actual experience. It is just a percentage allocated to you from the pool. So I know when we look at the valuation, we see our UAL and we think, how could it be that high? We haven't hired that many people. When you're part of the pool, it's not your experience. It's just your ownership from the pool. Since you're part of the pool, you also can't pay off your UAL. And generally speaking, you can't pay off your UAL anyways. The UAL just represents the difference between the liabilities you have and the asset that you need to meet, that you lack, basically, that you need to account for all your liabilities. It's just the gap there. So in order to pay off your UAL, you need to increase your assets or somehow decrease your liability. If you paid that entire UAL amount, great for the pool. You've put all that money into the pool and the UAL for the pool has gone down a little bit and your rate would decrease for, over a period of time with a side account, but you would still be allocated that same amount in UAL from the pool again. Then there are a couple of other rates that are associated with the SLGRP that I wanted to talk about as well. You both have transition surpluses. And this is added when you join the pool. If your UAL is less than the average, UAL is the percentage of payroll for members of the pool, who, other members of the pool, then you give, you're given a transition surplus so that you don't have to pay the full UAL rate, so that you're not subsidizing other members of the pool who have a higher UAL rate. So if you've looked at your valuation or the rates that I've provided with you, if you have a slight decrease in rates, it's called a transition surplus. And that's to account for you having less UAL than the average SLGRP member. Do you guys have questions on this part? Because that was a lot of information.
Is that?
I'm sorry.
Was that the, you said that's a transition thing. That's when we joined this group, right? So that's embedded in our rates at this time?
It is.
And it, does it expire?
It does. It comes off December 31st, 2027.
Okay, so that transition credit, if you want to call it that, for each district was put in place as an equalizer when we joined the group. And that equalizer will end over this period of time in 2027.
Exactly right.
Mary Michelle, can I, I just want to repeat a couple of things. Make sure I understand or I'm thinking right.
Yeah.
And it's, in general, outside of the transition pool, though, all our UAL is pooled together and we're paying the same rate?
Yes, every SLGRP employer pays the exact same UAL rate.
UAL rate, okay. And I'm kind of going to jump ahead because I saw some of the graphs, you know, I read through everything, but just to tie it back into this for now, I saw that Western Lane's UAL jumped or is, is going to jump pretty significantly in dollars, which leads me to believe, if it's based on payroll, that somehow our payroll must have jumped or something. And I saw Sayuslaw's really was very much, it was, it was quite a bit flatter. So I just want to hold that thought because our, our UAL increased by quite a bit. And if, and if we're all pooled, that would tell me that maybe the, our percentage of payroll jumped for some reason.
Yes, and it is going to all be tied to your payroll. So if your payroll increased, the allocation of UAL will increase with it. But your rate will still be the same for each of you.
Okay, so we should, it sounds like we should almost be focusing on what's our projected rates for budget purposes.
Right.
Not, not what are you, not what the UAL is in total, but what our rates are going to be for our people.
Correct. Yeah, I agree. On the second page, I just want to briefly talk about, Western Lane also has a pre-SLGRP pooled liability rate. This is just the same as a transition surplus, but before this SLGRP was formed, there were two pre-existing pools, the local government rate pool and then the state agencies and community colleges pool. And then those two were combined. And the local government rate pool had less UAL than the state agencies and community pool. So then they were given an equalizer rate. I like that phrase and I'm going to use it from now on. And so on top of the transition surplus offset, you also have a pre-SLGRP offset.
So equalizers up and down is what you're saying?
Well, this is a, so state agencies and community colleges have a negative or have a positive, I guess, an increase to theirs. And then there's, but you guys have, it's another, an additional decrease to your rate. And, but you're right, it can work both ways. If a new employer comes to the pool and their UAL is higher than the average SLGRP member, they'll have what we call transition viability. And they're, they'll have an additional rate to pay on top of the UAL rate.
Was that true of us, then?
No.
Okay, but we had.
You have, you guys have decreases on top of decreases.
I see. Okay.
Yeah. And then the only other thing I want to point out is that all employers pay the exact same rates for OPSEC. Not many employers know that OPSEC is a pool, so all assets and liabilities for OPSEC are pooled again and everyone pays the exact same rate. And then for retiree healthcare, essentially, all employers pay the exact same rates except for state agencies and the judiciary. They pay slightly higher rates. Any questions about that? We want to go to managing your rate. There are really only two options to manage your rate. One is your payroll and your payroll will affect all of your rates. So if you increase or decrease your rates, that's going to affect your normal cost rate, how much of a transition surplus rate you're getting, your side account offset. And then at some level, it will affect the pool rates for your UAL as well. And the OPSEC and RIA rates, less so because it's a pool and you're just one entity. But really, the focus would be on your, your tier one, tier two, normal cost rate. So if you don't have a lot of staff there or you have someone retire, you can start to see a bigger shift there. Whether it's being calculated specifically for your experience or fail leaves completely, then you will get the default rate for tier one, tier two. But ultimately, if they leave completely, then you don't have to worry about paying them. And then the other option, if we go to the next slide, is a side account. I know Sayuslaw started one with the Employer Incentive Fund, so I'll briefly go over it. But side accounts essentially are prepaying your rates. And you get to put a chunk of money into the. And you get to put a chunk of money into the PERS trust that can only be used to reduce your rates. And we calculate an additional rate offset. It works the exact same way as a transition surplus or the pre-SLGRP rate does. It just goes in to reduce your rate, reduce your UAL rate first and then any other rates that you may have after that. It is amortized over 20 years, so it will reduce your rate over a 20-year period of time. There are administrative fees. It's $1,500 for the first year and then $500 after that. But that's taken out automatically by our senior investment accountment, account after earnings. So it's nothing that you ever see on your side. And it's a very, I think, probably surprisingly easy process. I think when I walk employers through it, they're always expecting a couple more to like sign their names over in blood. But it's really just something we usually do over email for the most part. And then a wire check and then you'll start seeing it on your valuations. And that's how we report the accounting back to you. And Dean, I think you were the one who coordinated the side account. So you may be able to speak to the process a little bit more. But are there any questions on, on side accounts generally? Or payroll?
What we'd like to know is potentially, what are our rates, rates going to be in the future? And how, how much this side account could influence those rates? Flatten them or, or change the slope? Because we keep hearing that rate increases will be dramatic in our group. So we're wondering, what's the efficacy that the side account will do for us?
So the good news is, is for these upcoming rates for 2123, they're based off of the results from 2019 or, yeah, 2019. And we had incredible earnings that year. It was 13.53%. So we're going to have fantastic rates. And the other good news is that the side accounts earn the same earnings as the trust. So if we have a great earnings year, your side account can end up earning more than what you ended up putting in there. And your rate offset can go up higher than it was before. And typically, they can go down, but 2017 is a good example. So it's 2019 where employer side accounts actually increased in their offset more than they were the year prior. So we usually get a, typically a pretty good return on side accounts. And I think they're a pretty good investment for employers overall, especially when you're kind of staring down significant rate increases. That being said, the next biennium, 2123, we're expecting rates to go down for most employers. So you have your advisory rates, which I gave you guys, but you should, might have evaluations also. And the actuaries are expecting the final rates, which will come out in October, to be less than those advisory rates.
Okay, so that was based on evaluations in December 2019. Is that right?
Yes, I want to make, yes.
So the side account, since this problem carries forward to about 2037, the side accounts are designed to be amortized over 20 years to reduce the increases in whatever the rates might be be, because of the effect of the earnings in that side account. So what's prudent for an agency? How much side account should an agency have?
Well, we have an employer rate projection tool, so you can kind of forecast how much money to put in and what that effect will have on your contributions over the next 10 biennium. And then coming out next spring, which is, I'd wait a little bit before you consider creating a new side account. But coming out next spring, we have a much better tool coming out that will let you play with more assumptions when you're considering a side account. It'll let you play with the assumed earnings, with wage growth, with the side account amount, whether you want to create a new side account or just put more money into an existing side account. And then project that out over 10 years to see what's going to be my return on investment if I, if we commit this much money. Or you can make say, you can make two additional payments to a side account each year. So maybe you just want to do small stuff to kind of keep investing in there. And maybe that's more feasible than creating a new side account. But I think we'll probably, I can't give budget advice, so I'm just going to give facts. And from there, you can decide what the best choice is. I would wait to see what happens with earnings because the side accounts are still subject to the same earnings as the first trust, which is normally pretty fantastic. But right now, we're in a pandemic and you wouldn't want to see something be eaten up right away. But I know following the 2008 financial crisis, the next year, the earnings were 15.6%. And we don't do earnings until the end of the fiscal year. And then you get that percentage applied to your side account. So you could feasibly wait to the end and see what Treasury is reporting, which everyone always has access to. Or you just email your friendly actuarial business specialist to see what they're reporting and then make a decision at the end of the, at the end of the next year. But your side account isn't recalculated every single year. It's only recalculated at the next rate setting valuation. So we are using the data from December of 2019 to set your side account rate, which will be effective 7/1/2021, and that rate is not going to change until 7/1/2023. So you get the benefit of whatever that rate is for that whole period. And it won't be reevaluated again. So you could make, choose to make payments in between there to boost it up. Or just kind of be comfortable with the fact that your side account is going to continue to give you that benefit for that full period. And you have at least that amount of time to benefit from that offset. Any other questions?
So do most employers have side accounts?
They do now. They did not before. The employer incentive fund brought in a lot of employers. Getting 25% on your lump sum payment is a pretty good incentive. Now that we, now that the employer incentive fund was defunded, I hope you can, that that doesn't stop. But prior to that, it was really only really well-funded employers that were taking advantage of it. Or it kind of the same employers who were taking advantage of it. Or employers who, school districts, I would say that use pension obligation bonds a lot. But now we went from having about 100 employers with side accounts to having 300 employers with side accounts.
I also wanted to add that when Saïssas Valley applied for the side account, we did it first thing in the morning because, you know, we just wanted to be in there knowing that it was going to be competitive. And it didn't turn out to be competitive. There ended up, in, in that pool, there was lots of money left over. So then when the, the round came around that Western Lane was qualified for, I did it the same day, just didn't do it first thing in the morning. And all the money was gone by, you know, like two hours into it. So it was, you know, two different pools of employers competing for the money.
For the second round, the money was gone in two minutes.
Wow.
I had to write down the seconds for approval for those applications. Yeah.
So Mary Michelle, you said that program was defunded? What does that mean? Means they're going to discontinue the 25% match?
Yeah, so in the special session that just happened last Monday or this Monday, they, it was supposed to be funded by sports betting. And they re, they just said all sports betting has to go to something else. And then they also took 35 million away from the program. So the funds still exist. If they, if any other money in a future session, they opt to send any our way, we can start the program up again. But without those funding sources, it's effectively over. I think we, now that more employers hear that, I think that will, there will be a little bit more pressure to bring it back. I know that we have, we have 50 employers on the waitlist. So there's definitely a desire to participate.
Mary Michelle, did I, did I hear you right then? That the, the rate that you are credited for isn't figured out until the end of the biennium? Is it a two-year, two-year earnings that PERS received over that period? Or is it one, or is it one year at a time?
The side account rate you have is good for the biennium. And you'll get your advisory evaluation in the meantime, which would tell you if we were to re-enter your rate at this time, this is what your side account rate would be. But we don't change your rates midstream. But we only recalculate your rates every two years. But it will take into account the earnings that you had in the interim as well. I just mean to say that your rate is good for two years. But when it's recalculated, it will take into account the, the full experience for that biennium.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are we onto the next slide or?
Yeah, on the next couple of slides, I have provided, let's see. These are your rates, your net rates for tier one, tier two, OPSERP, general service, and then OPSERP, police and fire. And then I also provided just the transfer, your UAL, your combined valuation payroll. And then the payroll amounts for your tier one, general service, police and fire, and your tier two, general service, police and fire for both entities. Do you have any questions about this information?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Rick.
Oh, I was just going to say, it, it says advisory 2021. So is that when we find out the actual rates would be in October?
Yes.
And because 2019 was a pretty good earnings year, you think it'll probably be better than what the advisory rate is here?
Yes, the actuaries have said that the rate, they anticipate the rates will be less.
Thank you. So it shows the ops group and the tier one and tier two. Why does it show police and fire on this chart?
So since the OPSERP rate is a pooled rate, that's not really your experience. But the tier one and tier two is directly related to your actual experience. So that's why I've included it in here, because that does directly affect your tier one, tier two, normal cost rate.
Oh, so police and fire is in the same pool as us, is what you're saying? Even though we don't have police and fire employees?
If you don't have, which are you, Western or Saïssas?
Western Lane doesn't have any police or fire.
You didn't have, oh, okay, yeah, it's, the way it's broken out for actuarial purposes is tier one, general service, police, fire, and then tier two, general service, police, fire. So it's not the classification, it's just the tier. So even though you don't have police and fire, you, you had the tier at some point. You had tier one pay.
Yes, we did have tier one.
And that's all that is.
Okay, so.
Tier one, general service.
So the rates look like they go up every year, but you're anticipating they'll flatten a little bit? Do you think they'll go down, go up?
The UAL rate will start to go down. The UAL rate will start to go down, depending on what happens with COVID, of course. But overall, generally speaking, it's going to start trending down. The normal cost, that's a variable because that depends on just your overall payroll. That's a direct reflection of your payroll. So that's one that can go up or down. Then you do have the transition surplus and the pre-SLGRP rate. Those are going to come off in 2027, so you can expect a bump in 2027. But overall, the biggest contributing factor, which is the tier one, tier two UAL rate, and that's increasing your OPSERP net rate also, that's going to start going down. And that's going to drive rates overall down. And that's going to make a bigger difference than your one, one and a half percent from the pre-SLGRP or from the transition surplus.
I see, okay.
Any other questions about what you're seeing on there? Any other questions about the valuation or legislation? Or if you have member questions, I can write them down and get back to you.
Are you done with your presentation?
Yes, that's all I have. So if you have any questions, anything general, I'm happy to open it up to you guys.
So based on your experience, the last time we looked at our valuation, our PERS liability, unfunded liability, it was around $2.9 million. Okay, and that may change with the 2019 valuation. But do you think it's prudent for our district to have a side account or not have a side account?
Well, it depends on how much you think you could do. And without EIF, the minimum for a side account, the minimum payment for a side account is $250,000. And before, it was just $25,000 with EIF. So that's, that may be a limiting factor. But what I can do is use the tool and project out what that would look like for you. And you could kind of see at different amounts if that's worth your while.
That'd be helpful. I mean, I think we'd like, no, others can speak up. But I think, you know, if we, when you say a side account, the minimum is 250. Is that 250 per year? Is that 250 to open the account? How does that work?
So you just make one, the minimum is just $250,000 one time. And that's all you have to do and you could walk away. Or you could opt to make additional payments and you can make up to two a year. Or you could opt to create another side account if you wanted to after that. And you have a couple of options. You can decide to, you want your rate offset to begin on a certain date. And you can pay the actuary a thousand bucks and they will do the calculation and make it so. And we can start it as soon as November 1st, if that's what you wanted. Or you can just have it, you pay nothing and it just gets rolled into the next valuation that comes out. And if you made a payment this year, the rate offset would be effective 7/1/2022. So I would give you all those timelines, but I can do a projection for you to let you know kind of what offset you would best expect. And it would just be an estimate at this point, but a pretty good estimate of what you could initially expect.
Well, we've been concerned because we were cautioned at other PERS presentations in the past about, you know, steep increases to come. And so the side accounts were presented to us as a means to kind of flatten those out a little bit. And so what we're trying to learn is whether or not we should still be prepared for those kinds of increases or if we if we have if we have an unfunded liability of several million dollars, is it prudent for us to have set asides equal to that amount over a number of years in side accounts? What's what's prudent for us as a district? What would you recommend?
I can't say. But I can also share with you the financial modeling that shows you overall what rates we're expecting, if everything goes perfectly to actuarial assumptions. And then there's kind of a very degree, so if things are if things are way off course, here's what we expect to happen, like if worst case scenario, or if things get a whole lot better somehow, this is how we expect things to happen. You can see the varying degrees. And then the tool that we're working on right now will let you kind of change the earnings rate. So 7.2% is the assumed rate, but I don't know that we've ever hit that amount. I know in 2018 it was 0.5%, but 2019 was 13.5%. So you can, you'll be able to change that amount or change your payroll. Our assumed earning salary growth is 3.5%, but if that doesn't make sense for you, if that's too much or too little, then you can change that to better track what that looks like. Essentially, it's a budgeting tool to help you decide. And then you can pop in a side account to see what your return on investment would be and if it makes sense for you. But it sounds like there's quite a bit of information I can give you and then maybe that would help you, it make more sense. And then there are other fire districts that have done side accounts that I can connect you with that I that may be able to let you know if they think it's worth your while as well. I know Sisters Blackbeard did it. They're the first ones that come to mind, but there are a couple others that maybe I can look at to see if they're in the same kind of range as you to see if if it would be helpful to have a conversation with them.
Mary Michelle?
Yeah.
So you said initially to start it up, you would have a $250,000 opening amount and you said you could put up to have two more. Is there a limit or a minimum amount that you are allowed to give on those other two submissions into that?
No, so it's just 250,000 minimum to open it, but any of those additional payments can be any amount that you'd like. Yeah.
So different question. Do districts generally, according to Gatsby, do they report their unfunded liability on their balance sheets?
I'm not sure. According to Gatsby, I know that it's included in Gatsby information because the same actuaries who do our evaluation do the Gatsby information. And so are side accounts.
Sure. Said another way, I mean, we understand how our unfunded liability is calculated, but should we be looking at this like it's an accounts payable, that's something we absolutely owe? Is it something that we should acknowledge in our financials as a district to determine our our net worth, if you will?
I don't know. Let me check on that. At first blush, I would say no, it's just a percentage of the pool that even if you could pay it off, you would still have an obligation to continue paying the rate. So I I would say no, but let me double check on that.
So if you, for example, our if ours was 2.9 million, if we put 2.9 million in a side account, we'd still pay the Ops rate, but we'd be using our side account to mitigate the rate.
Yeah, that's what would happen. And so it would probably exceed your UAL rate and what would happen is it would end up reducing, say, probably your normal cost rate over a period of 20 years. And that but until your side account started to deplete and you'd start to pay more over time of your own rate of the regular contribution rate, unless your regular contribution rate has planned reduced. But yeah, that's exactly how it would work.
Okay. And do do you as an agency make any recommendations to districts about, say, for example, if you have employees that are allowed to use accumulated sick leave or some portion thereof to juice their final average earnings? Do you have any recommendations for districts in that regard?
I'm aware of the situation you're talking about and I'm trying to think of the diplomatic response. It's going to contribute to UAL every single time because that's not something that the actuaries can't account for in their benefits when before they retire. That's not going to be factored into their typical calculation. So the moment they retire, there's going to be unexpected an unexpected increase in benefits that's going to instantly boost UAL. The upside is you're part of a pool, so that will just be absorbed by everyone else in the pool as well.
And that's just for tier one and tier two employees, right? The the sick leave, counting the sick leave as annual salary? It doesn't account, that doesn't go into effect for Ops, correct?
You mean for UAL?
No, for counting sick leave, adding that to your annual salary when calculating your retirement benefits?
Oh, oh, yes, that's just tier one, tier two, yes.
So that doesn't apply to the Ops group?
Unfortunately.
One of those things that was contributing to UAL that they cut out pretty quickly.
So where does where does your agency think this is going?
Which part?
I mean, the unfunded liability, I mean, we've seen articles even on the front page of the New York Times about the concern for Oregon's pension plan as compared to other states and entities. I just wondered, how does your agency feel about your fiscal health and and the ability of districts to carry that liability?
You know, I I'll say from my perspective, I think that we've made the appropriate changes already, but at some point a bill just comes to you that you have to pay. And when we looked at the funded status, we were already almost at 80%, which is pretty good. I think the difficult part comes in trying to implement new legislation and when that stuff comes through, that can always affect employer rates in a way that we sometimes unanticipated. And some of our biggest changes in funded status come from legislation and it's all intended with the best of intentions, but that really swings you and I don't anticipate that first will stop being a hot topic in the legislature, so that's a really big variable. I think that when we look at the projections as they stand now, the relief comes relatively quickly, but it just requires minimal interference. And I hope that we get kind of more support for, I'm biased because it was my baby, but the incentive programs where we give the employers like 25% match for a lump sum payment was huge and it made a big difference for a lot of employers. But it didn't touch benefits and it didn't change the system and for PERS, the agency, we didn't have to spend a bunch of money trying to update systems, which we're doing now for a lot of other things, this kind of zero cost. That's a really great idea. I think if we could stay on the track, that kind of track where we just help employers afford rates for a long period, a longer period of time, that's the right kind of mentality. Benefits wise, I think we just need to step away from that for a little bit and let it let it breathe or start trying to improve on a process that's already been discussed or legislated quite a bit. Any other questions?
Mary Michelle, I just have kind of a nuts and bolts question here too, and it's so we have, I think it's slide 16 shows the the rates and is the bulk of our our rate made up of the UAL rate or is it the Ops rate?
It's the UAL rate, but the UA, the tier one, tier two UAL rate is also in the Ops rate.
Okay, but those two rates are are different by 4% or so. So is it weighted significantly heavier to the UAL?
If you if you look at the, do you have the Excel sheet?
No.
Okay, so the difference is there are different components for the tier one, for the net rates, but for the the difference between the net rates, there is your normal cost. So the Ops normal cost is less than the tier one, tier two normal cost. Both rates have the tier one, tier two UAL rate. But the normal cost for Ops is substantially less.
Yeah, so if I'm, if I've got an employee who makes 100,000 a year, is the op, they they pay a blended rate, right, between the regular and the UAL? Is that how that works? You've got two different rates. How do you apply that to somebody's payroll?
So for an Ops, police and fire employee, the rate is 24.6%, but for a Ops for Ops tier one, that rate or tier one, tier two, that rate is 33.83%.
Okay, so this is based on your current employee's status as far as how long they've been in the pool? Okay, so we have to figure out, I guess we'd have to figure to figure it out, we'd have to know what percent of our employees payroll is in which tier and that would give us kind of the blended rate.
Yeah, and so I've included for you guys at the bottom, how much of your employees are tier one, tier two? You don't have that many tier one, tier two, so you're not really paying that higher rate that much. You're mostly Ops employees at this rate. You're mostly paying that lower rate.
Yeah, I think that answers it. So we have, yeah, so you could figure out some kind of an average rate. If you were budgeting ahead, you could kind of use that to figure out an average rate of what you're doing. Okay, and then slide 17, I'm still really confused about how 2018 UAL goes from like 2.9 million to 3.6 million or something. It goes up like $700,000.
Are you Sayu Slaw or Western?
Western Lane, yeah.
Western Lane, let me take a look.
And Sayu Slaw is really flattened, but ours really jumps up and I if it's if it's just an allocation to payroll, I guess I was, you know, do some of many of us haven't been on here that long on the district, but I it makes me wonder if we had a big jump. You know, does this reflect a huge jump in payroll over time or?
Let's see, so it looks like at the end of December 2015, you had basically 1.3 million and then it went up to 1.5. Sayu Slaw was 645 to 882 and then they had a drop in payroll to 820, but Western has continued to grow in payroll, another 100,000 there.
Yeah, it looks like the payroll hasn't changed. I mean, one went down, one went up, but the it's just the UAL took such a steep climb in 2018.
I'll I'll look into that and see if I can figure out if there's anything else there.
Okay, we, if it's not readily apparent, we can.
It would be good to know that answer, though. That's a good question.
No, I can figure that out. It's just not if it's not jumping out at me immediately, so, but it's it's easy enough to figure out. It'll just take a little bit longer for me to research, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the chart, all of those increases are increase in staffing at Western Lane. Those are direct reflections of hiring employees.
Yeah, I think that was the hire when they increased staff. I agree with Derek.
Well, I guess I'm seeing a drop in the tier one general, a little bit of a drop and a slight increase in the combined. It just doesn't look proportionate to me, the 17 to 18 jump in payroll compared to the steeper line in the UAL.
Well, and even though, so I'm not showing your Ops trip on here and so you do have, you are hiring, but you're not hiring tier one, tier two, you're hiring Ops. And that's just not reflected on this chart.
Yeah, that first jump from 13 to 15, we hired two employees. The increase from 17 to 18, we hired one employee. Not, no, so we had the daytime position 14, 15, because Henry was still alive. Burright came in at 16, we still had the daytime position, then we started transitioning to the five slash six positions. And then 2017, we hired the last three was Ben, Doug and Tom. But yeah, regardless, it's a reflection of increasing our staff because we were at 12 in 2013, then we started migrating to 14 and 16 or 14 and 15 workforce.
Okay.
Does that answer it or or do you still want me to?
I'd still. Why your graphs are the way that I, you know, the relationship on your graph, if it's not, if it's not related to the combined valuation payroll or the tier one general, because I'm not seeing that on your graph, a jump there in payroll. Maybe maybe I'm not understanding that graph quite right, but I it's maybe it doesn't reflect total payroll. I thought the blue and the yellow lines would reflect our payroll increases or decreases.
I would expect to see it in the blue line and the green line.
Okay.
Can't argue with me.
Any other questions?
Okay, very, thank you very much, Mary Michelle. Very informative, I learned a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy, happy to. If anything else pops up, you guys can feel free to email me, and I'll dig into it. I know there's a lot of information, so it takes some time to do on it. And yeah, if I have any other specific questions, feel free to send them along. And while I don't even understand my own retirement information, if you do have member questions, you can feel free to send those along to me, and I'll make sure that they get to the right people to answer for you. But thank you for having me.
Absolutely, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, next week is the board meeting, six o'clock. We'll see everybody then.
It's like we get together every week.
Yes. We have been.
Thanks for putting that together.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I learned a lot about pooling and stuff. And, and I have seen those transition rates decrease. Now I know what that means, so that's good.
That is good.
Well, it's just a convoluted process. They got the transition rates in and out at the beginning, and then you've got the tier one, and those folks will be retiring. And mind-bogglingly complicated, but.
It really is.
You know.
Yeah.
What we're looking for is predictability. The interesting thing is, if you, if you follow the stock market, you know, of course, it was the big crash right after COVID, but the market has bounced back pretty well in some equities. So hopefully, the state had a good cross-section of equities that have helped restore that funding status. That would be great.
But you got politicians involved, so that always introduces a lot of variability.
Yes, yeah.
Don't wait, Larry, there'll be another correction soon.
Oh, yeah. Thanks a lot.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
Bye.
Yeah.
Bye bye.